I wanted to call the meeting, the Wednesday, March 14th, 2018, meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Present.
Hirschbein.
Present.
Hudson.
Present.
Maruzzi.
Present.
Woods.
Present.
Vice Chair Calardine.
Present.
And Chair Wermick.
Present.
Seven members present.
Can we have a report on plant, on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, March the 8th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Thank you. On the acceptance of the agenda, there are two items that I would like to move. Number three, unfinished business, I'd like to move that to exchange places between four and three, so that our public guests can finish quicker and we can take care of internal business after the public business. And we have our City Council Liaison here with us today. Welcome, City Consular Middleton. In the event that she has to leave at 2:45, 2:30, we may move the City Council Liaison report a little bit up to, actually, Flynn, would it be okay if we moved it up to the first thing in the agenda?
Yes, that would be fine.
So that if, if the City Consular has a report, she says she doesn't have a report today.
Okay.
So we won't have to move that forward. Okay, this is a time for public comments. If, so can I take a roll call on the acceptance of the agenda, moving items, exchanging items three and four?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. Public comments, this is a time that's been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Items and Items of General Interest within the subject-manner jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Each member of the public will have three minutes. Just so you will know, item two is a, a public hearing item, and you can address the commission on item two. Item four is new business, which is the Indigo Properties Palm Springs, major architectural to construct a Porsche dealership. That is not a public hearing item, so if there are people here who want to address us on that item or the Planning Commission rules, this is the time that you would speak. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission? Yes.
My name is Chris Hector.
Oh. Could be on.
My name is Chris Hector, representing Indigo Auto Group and the new Porsche dealership coming to Palm Springs. With me, I have Gary Whitfield, the architect of record, Rick Kramer, representing Porsche Cars North America, and we're here to answer any and all questions you may have on the project.
I think at this point, we will probably ask you questions when the item comes up. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Hearing none, public, the public comments section is closed. The next item is the consent calendar. It is the approval of the minutes of January 10, 2018, and January 24, 2018. Are there any comments or are there motions?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Will you call the roll, please? The consent calendar passes seven zero. Moving into the first public hearing item, MCGI, Inc., the eight, 18-8 Fine Men Salon, or the Fine Men Salon, seeking approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, for a full-service hair salon within the Capter Plaza at 750 East Hockwood Canyon Way. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to put, place a full-service hair salon in a 2,159 square foot retail, or sorry, office space within the Capter Plaza in suite number three. The slide that's before you shows you the two buildings that, or I'm sorry, the four buildings, two parcels that make up Capter Plaza. The 750 building is the one closest to the right of the slide, which is adjacent to the Renaissance Hotel, and the yellow star is the rear space, which is suite number three, which is where this salon will be located. So the proposed use will include a reception area and office space, storage, and 10 stations for men's grooming. The site is zoned REO, which is a land use designation and zoning in Section 14 specific plan, which requires grooming facilities or personal services to obtain a conditional use permit. So that is why this application is before you today. So you'll see within your staff report, there are findings that need to be made by the Planning Commission. There's a description of the use. The slide that's in front of you shows the building, and it is the rear corner of Capter Court, the 750 building. And then one more slide shows the interior floor plan and shows the layout with the 10 stations, storage, office space, and reception area. So as you mentioned, this is a public hearing. Notice was sent out to all property owners within 500 feet of the property. Planning staff had not received any comments or emails from any of the adjoining adjacent residents. And there's a resolution and conditions of approval that were handed out to you today. That is addressed, a gender-neutral approval. It is the, if the Planning Commission approves this resolution today and this conditional use permit, it will be, it will take the place for both properties. So all buildings in Capter Plaza, if another personal service use were to come in, they would not have to seek another conditional use permit. So the resolution and conditions are gender-neutral. They say full-service salon and not specific to a men's salon. So that concludes my report. The applicant is here, and they can address the commission. Thank you.
Do members of the commission have questions? I'm going to start with Commissioner Calardine and go down.
I think this is clear in the staff report, but I want to double-check. We're not approving any signs with this action?
Well, there is a, there's a sign program for the plaza, and they would need to-
So they could be part of that program?
Right.
The staff report says that it would be, I think it says there's a future action to approve any sign, or is the monument sign already been approved?
The monument signs are existing.
Okay, so we wouldn't, they could put up a sign on the monument, but it would not require any further action?
Yes, they're, if you've seen the signs, there are-
They're already there.
Individual suite plaques.
That's my question.
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Flynn, I was curious about one of your comments. You mentioned that in approving this CUP, we are blanket approving the property for future uses that are personal in nature?
Yes, what we are proposing to do, it's somewhat unusual to require a conditional use permit for a salon use. And so what we are proposing to do is by your action today, if you choose to approve this conditional use permit, other salon uses would be permitted on the properties that are part of Capter Plaza without having to go through the conditional use permit process again.
Just salon uses.
Just salon uses. It's exclusive to the salon use. And again, that's one of the reasons why this is a gender-neutral approval that we're granting. Land use generally is gender-neutral to begin with, but it would permit either a women's salon or men's salon or unisex salon.
So if someone wanted to put in a massage parlor, for example, that would be a different kind of a use.
That would be a different kind of use.
And not covered by this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Yeah, actually, that was going to be one of my questions. If this were not part of Section 14 but was zoned similarly outside of Section 14, would it require a CUP for this use?
It would not. In most cases, in the central business district or C1 zone or in a shopping center, it does not require a CUP. Only the tribal Section 14 plan requires it.
And does the planning department have any knowledge as to why that is the case? And does the planning department have any knowledge as to why that is the case? What was the rationale for requiring a CUP in Section 14 to begin with for a salon?
So in 2007, when the Section 14 plan was redone and approved by the city council and the tribal, I'm not aware of why specifically they've asked for that to be called out in the REO zone. REO is for retail entertainment office. It was just a land use that they wanted to regulate.
So we don't have any specific guidance as to the rationale for that requirement in terms of this CUP?
I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Hudson.
Yeah, I'm just curious about the category of salon. I'm assuming in this case, obviously, it's hair, but what about skincare, other sort of spa-type services? Are those included in this sort of umbrella category?
So in the Section 14, I'll read exactly what it says. It says, "personal convenience services," and then a quote, "a barber, beauty, nail salon, a spa, tailor, dry cleaner, self-service laundry, et cetera," end quote.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So just following up on that, this approval would allow us to put a dry cleaner in there? Is it that broad?
We had... No, it's not that broad. We've worded the resolution to say a salon. If you want to include that entire category, we could do that, but we've kept it rather narrow.
No, I didn't. I just wanted to make sure we hadn't broadened it to the entire category. Okay, there being no further questions, the public hearing is open. If the applicant is here, you have 10 minutes.
A lot of you don't know us by our given names, so you look kind of puzzled that we're George and Elvin, but that's what our mothers named us and staff. We're so excited about this project and about being a part of the Capter Plaza. I must admit that we were part-time residents during the Capter Plaza discussion and development, so we don't have that history, but all we do know is that we have found a wonderful landlord and a great place. We have some great neighbors already, as you guys know, with coffee and some of the services going in there. I just wanted to just highlight a couple of things about what we're planning and how I think it will impact our community. The first thing is that we plan to hire initially over 12 cosmetologists, two estheticians, and three part-time desk staff. So we're hiring, and as we grow, we'll hire more, so we do anticipate a growth there. One of the things that... And by the way, that will initially constitute over $400,000 in annual salaries, so I think that's important to bring those salaries to Palm Springs. One of the things that makes us a little different in the salon industry is that our staff will be employees. They will not be renting chairs or be what you might traditionally think in a salon. So as part of that, our plan as a company is to offer full benefits. So from day one, we'll have 401K plans, we'll have insurance. And as I began to talk to stylists and interview stylists, that is one thing that gets a really oh-my-gosh from everyone because they have to take care of that benefit themselves. So it's worth noting that we intend to hire the best and keep them. One of the things that we're also excited about is all the recent development that's going on on the Takwitz Canyon Way, and we have ourselves stood out in the evenings to see the crowds walking up and down the street from all the conventions that are coming. So our services really are geared towards everyone, and because we're a national model, a lot of people walking will recognize us because they may be clients somewhere else, which is another thing that we're very excited about. We'll be full service. We'll offer the question, because we'll offer full services associated with that, including hair care, grooming services, and we're also going to offer hair restoration consultation. Now, you might look at me and say, "Really?" Because I haven't had hair for a very long time, but it's proven that there is technology now available to men and women that will help maintain hair, and also we'll be training our staff how to consult for other services around hair restoration, kind of unique to a salon environment, so we're very excited about that, too. We are... Our cosmetologists by state board are trained to do services for everyone, and that's our intention, of course, but we are finding that in the research that we will be providing hair services for those who like, well, at least refer to as wash and wear. So it's about getting a nice cut, being able to walk out and feel really good about yourself and about your hair, along with other services that we'll offer. We've done our analysis and our price points and our marketing, and we feel we'll be very competitive to the other salons and barbers in the area. And just finally, we offer... We will offer a very unique, I think, environment for the salons because, as most of you know, we've all got our hair cut. You go to a barber or a salon, and it's open. You're sitting out in the middle of a room with a lot of people. If you look at our design, you will notice that when you come into the salon, there's a sense of privacy because a lot of people don't want to know or share. They might color their hair, or they might have other services. So it's built on the consultation with a stylist to determine what's next. So I think this is a unique experience in Palm Springs and one that we're really counting on helping us build success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? There being none, if you want to rebut your own testimony, you have three minutes for rebuttal. I don't think you're going to want to use it. I don't think you need to. This matter is now before the commission. Are there any general comments before we take action? Starting down with... At the far end of the podium with Commissioner Woods.
No questions for the applicant or staff. I do think that it was a great recommendation of staff to do an umbrella for the CUP for this type of issue, and these guys are the trailblazers. It is really wonderful to see this particular development, which is... Was preserved to actually be activated. I give credit to these guys for coming forward with a business model to help that activation and show that a development like this that we preserved can actually succeed, and I wish them a lot of success.
Yeah, I'm extremely pleased and excited about this because I was involved before my role here in the Takwitz Plaza, now Capter Plaza, issue, and to see these great new businesses going in there makes me very happy, and that's what we need. You always have to have strong economic support behind preservation, so I'm very pleased.
Commissioner Hudson.
Excuse me, I'd like to echo those comments. I do have a specific question on the floor plan. Maybe you can clarify this for me. I see, obviously, the reception desk, but I don't see front doors. And then the other issue is you have a break room with a pair of exterior doors. I'm assuming that used to be an entrance. Could you clarify where the entry point is and what you plan on doing with those two doors?
So looking at the plan on the screen, the suite that we are occupying, as you have already figured out, we're switching it from the front door-back door configuration. And the back door, double door, will be an employee entrance and into a break room, which will allow us to bring materials and products in through that door as well. If you look at the rounded side of the building right here, and you see those three dots, that's that porch in the picture, and that will be the front door. So the front door is in front of the reception area. Does that answer your question?
Is it possible for Glenn to point that out while you're talking?
Or to put the photo up there, that might be a better...
That was my assumption. I just wanted to make sure, especially when you go to the building department.
So where you see the reception actually will be facing the front door.
Right here.
That's correct. That's...
So the front door is here?
The reception desk right there.
Right here.
That's it.
So it's kind of hidden.
Could I answer your question?
Yeah, and I'm just assuming those new doors will match the other doors on the complex?
Actually, we're not changing the doors due to the historical nature of the building. We'll be using the existing doors, yes.
Existing doors, great. Even better, thanks.
Yes. We're not touching the exterior at all.
Commissioner... And Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yeah, I echo everyone's comments as well, so very happy to see this. I have a comment to make as far as the action that Planning Commission makes, and I would be happy to see the CUP contain the uses as quoted in the Section 14 document. I don't think any of those other uses would be detrimental in this case, and it would save any applicant the cost and our time to be able to say that's okay moving forward.
Commissioner Downenfeld.
I wasn't going to respond to my fellow Commissioner, Mr. Hirschbein, but I will first. I think we need to have a better control. CUP is an important entitlement, and granted, the kinds of other services mentioned by Glenn in the Section 14 ordinance would probably be acceptable, but I think we need to look at them on a case-by-case basis just to make sure that they call themselves one thing, but they're actually doing what they say they're doing. I just think it gives us a better handle and control on going forward with respect to some of these tenants. But I do want to compliment the applicant on a spectacular proposal. It's a great use of the Capter Plaza. I'm particularly impressed by the fact that you really think Palm Springs can support 10 stations. That's pretty remarkable. So good luck to you, and I think it's a great project.
Vice Chair Calardine.
Just to echo everyone's compliments to the applicant, it's a great proposal. I also have to do a bit of a mea culpa, I guess, or something like that, that I was really nervous about whether Capter Plaza was going to be able to rent out all of the uses, and it is just turning in to be spectacular, and that I'm glad to see that these people are contributing to it as well as all of the other tenants that are going in there. I'm turning into a real success story, and the people that had something to do with that deserve a lot of credit. I have to agree with Commissioner Hudson... Mr. Downenfeld, rather, that the... I don't want to expand the blanket CP at this time without a pretty detailed staff analysis of what that would entail. I know dry cleaners in particular have some issues associated with them that require some analysis because of the hazardous materials that they are involved with that process. With that, when you're ready for a motion, I'll be ready to support it.
I just want to make two comments. I also agree with Commissioner Downenfeld. I think the... We want to make sure that the uses that go in this spectacular building will actually work and add to it, so I think it's good that we keep this limited. I want to congratulate you on what looks like it's going to be a great project, and I wanted to thank staff to make sure that the approvals are gender-neutral so that we're very clear, and despite what the use may or may not be, that our approvals at least are gender-neutral. So with that, I would take motions. I think it's a great project, and I have one question, though. Is coffee open? Almost. We've got a motion by Vice Chair Calardine. Can I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Downenfeld. Can you call the roll, please? This passes seven zero. Congratulations, and we're looking forward to seeing you open. Oh, please invite us. Okay, moving... Right along to new business. Item three or item 4A, Indigo Properties Palm Springs LLC, for a major architectural approval to construct a 44,845-foot square-foot Porsche dealership building on an undeveloped 2.69-acre pad located at 3737 East Palm Canyon Drive. Can we have a...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I make a disclosure first?
Yes.
Probably should disclose that this is what, eight years ago, when the BMW dealership was approved, our firm, working for the city or under the direction of the city certainly, did the staff work, particularly for the MND and the staff reports and with the overall entitlement process. So... And I was the project manager for it. I've checked with both the city attorney and the city staff, and there's no indication of any conflict, but I felt I should best disclose it.
And I would just like to confirm that we have had that conversation with Mr. Calardine. It has been reviewed by Mr. Dowd, our city attorney, and he has confirmed that there is no conflict of interest in Mr. Calardine participating in this discussion.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair, if I may, while Mr. Robertson is gearing up to deliver the staff report, I wanted to make a quick comment concerning the SEQA review that is applicable to this project. You will note that a 2006 MND, an initial study that was prepared for the BMW dealership, is referenced in your staff report, and we had a chance to take a look at that document. Although the document does contemplate the eventual build-out of this site, it does not evaluate the project as proposed today. Its emphasis and focus was really on the pre-existing BMW dealership. So with that on mind, in mind, I recommend that we do not rely on the MND as a basis for approval for this project. However, we did take a look at the project as proposed and have determined that it would be subject to a categorical exemption under SEQA as an infill exemption. So staff has actually revised the draft resolution before you. Should you decide to approve the project today, the resolution does include findings in support of that categorical exemption.
And that's item D, 1 through 5 in the revised resolution. Am I correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Just why don't we give people a moment to read that? Hi. Commissioner Downenfeld.
I just have a question. I assume that by stating these five... Making these five statements, we are basically saying that we are... Because this meets the criteria to exempt us as an infill project under SEQA.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that item before we get the staff report? There being none, can we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. So before I go into the staff report proper, I just want to take a moment to go through the background of this site and the project. So as you see on the aerial on display, let me just... So to my left here is the undeveloped parcel that is in question, the 2.69 acre. This is the existing BMW facility, and to the west of the site is an existing mobile home park, and also to the south of it is an existing mobile home park. So this whole area, as you will probably know by now, is made up of several auto dealerships. So the Porsche Palm Springs would be the latest in the new proposal in that area should it be approved. And of course, here is East Palm Canyon Drive. So additional background information, as mentioned earlier by our Assistant City Attorney, way back in 2006, the Planning Commission recommended the adoption of an MND to the city council for the approval of a proposal that involved an 8.8-acre site. At that time, the proposal was for the development of a BMW facility, but also that application included a general plan amendment that asked for the vacation of East Palm Canyon Road. And it also included a zoning text amendment that would allow the reduction of setback requirements along East Palm Canyon Drive, and then also a major architectural application for the construction of the existing BMW site. Way back in 2006, when this project first came before you and the city council, this whole area was analyzed, but that pad was left... whole area was analyzed, but that pad was left vacant, and there was no proposal for it at that time. However, to the south of it, there were areas that were used for parking purposes, and the Planning Commission at that time appropriately required a condition of approval, asking that required the then-ownership to have some kind of landscaping on that undeveloped site. That is the site that is in question today, and that's what's before you. So today's item is by Indigo Automotive. They are the new ownership of both BMW and this undeveloped area. They are asking, it's a major architectural application, that is for the construction of a new two-story building, approximately 44,845 square foot in size, for a Porsche automobile dealership. That dealership would contain, it's a 30-foot-high two-story building, it will contain office spaces, training and break rooms, display areas, service base, and storage areas. In the staff report, it's just a full detail, an analysis was provided regarding the mass and scale, and then additional detailing of the architecture of the project. On February 20, 2018, this item was taken to the AAC for review. Overall, they provided favorable conditions, but they had some concerns regarding the conceptual landscaping and the LED lighting. Specifically, they wanted more details regarding the LED lighting. They also wanted a revised landscape plan. That has since been done, but they required that revised landscape plan be brought back to them for a final review and approval. They also asked that the applicant provide a more detail on the mechanical equipment that is to be placed on the roof of the building. That has also been done. It's among the packages that you have before you. But as I mentioned, the landscaping, the revised landscape plan will go back to the AAC for additional review and final approval. Staff has also included some specific, project-specific conditions. So if you look back at the very front page of your report, those four project-specific conditions are stated. Number one, that the Planning Commission should accept those proposed conditions from the AAC, requiring a revised landscape plan that will go back to the AAC, and that the applicant should provide additional details on the LED lighting to be installed on the building. And also, we are proposing that should this project be approved, there should be a provision that any lighting on the building must comply with Section 93.21.00 of our code that regulates outdoor lighting. And finally, that any LED lighting that will be installed on the building should be switched off at 9:00 PM. Those are the proposed conditions from staff. Earlier, the City Attorney spoke on the CEQA determination, so I do not need to go back to that one. But also, during the week, we did receive questions from Commissioner Wood, so if I may --
If you'd go through them one by one and answer them, that would be good.
Yes.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should be showing the slides of the building. So again, this is the proposed building. This is a rendering of the building, and as you can see, it is a two-story building that covers a good portion of the 2.69 undeveloped acre. This is the site plan, this is one of the site plans. This is an additional site plan that shows display areas, the pedestrian parkways that will lead from Palm Canyon into the site. This is the roof plan that shows a display area. And this is an additional, second-floor planning. These are the sections of the elevation. All these items are available in the packages that are presented to you. These are additional elevations of the building. And this is the roof plan that was asked for by the AAC to show how the mechanical equipment will be screened. These are the sections that show the overall height of the building. Again, all these are available in the package before you. And this is revised landscape plan, and as I mentioned in my presentation, the AAC has required that this come back to them for a final review and approval. One of the issues that they raised with the landscaping is that additional landscaping should be provided to provide buffer between the proposed dealership and the adjacent residential uses. In our analysis, there is adequate separation between the proposed dealership and the existing mobile home to the west of the site, in addition to the wall that is existing at the site. So we have proposed that additional landscaping that will consist of trees and other plantings to soften that area be provided. The applicant has agreed to do that. This is the photometric, staff will review that separately. It must conform to the regulations and the requirements of our code. And this is the details of the lighting that the AAC required. This was presented to staff after the review of the AAC. These are just pictures of the existing pictures and conditions of the site. Additional. And this is the material board. I have the original material board behind you. Flynn is coming together for you.
Edward, is there a material board here that includes the actual materials as opposed to just the slide?
No, that's, we have it, it's coming to --
Oh, we do have it, okay.
If I may, Madam Chair, I want to go through those set of questions.
Please.
Okay. So the first question is, who owns the frontage? Who owns the frontage road? Public or private? It is private, because it was vacated by council action in 2006. Second question is, is the city requiring sidewalks along Palm Canyon? So there are existing sidewalks on, I think I have pictures to show here. After receiving these questions yesterday, I went through the site again. So there are existing sidewalks, both in front of the internal frontage road. So this is the area that abuts the street itself, but you only have, they only have display areas here. But furthermore, this sidewalk is actually fronts the dealership itself. So it goes all the way from Cherokee Way to the entry into the new site.
And can you get to that sidewalk from the front of the trailer, the adjacent trailer park? I know there's not a sidewalk, but if you were walking in the dirt there, could you?
Yeah, exactly. So this is a picture right there. So the sidewalk terminates at the entrance leading into this new site. So this section is seen here.
So there are existing sidewalks, but not currently in this --
Yeah, not from here to the existing --
And --
Where's the picture?
Say that again?
This is adjacent to the trailer park, to the --
To the west.
To the north?
No, that would be to the west.
In answering that question, will there be a sidewalk here?
I will refer to the city engineer to answer that.
Currently, we don't have any plans to create a sidewalk at that location. The city does have a project on Tuckwitz Creek, on East Palm Canyon, where we're widening the bridge and providing sidewalks, but it doesn't extend to the dealership.
Okay, so that's an issue. So the answer is, yes, there are in other places, but it's not currently planned?
Yes, and part of the reason for now is that that area does not lead to anywhere. So you see that it terminates with that wall next to the trailer park.
Yeah, just, if you don't mind, just go forward. We can deal with that later.
So number three, the question is, there are display cars in what appears to be the public right-of-way. Is this legal, and will it continue? So those display areas were part of the approval granted by council in 2006, so for now, they are allowed to park there.
And could you give us a slide of those? There is a slide that shows those. So those, then they extend all the way down? Those have been previously approved?
Correct.
By council action.
Yes.
But they were approved on this property back in the original approvals?
That's correct. So number four, will there be a financial security or bond posted to complete the public improvements? What about for the project as a whole? Again, I will defer to the city engineer for that. Yes, so the question is, will there be a financial security or bond posted to complete the public improvements? What about for the project as a whole?
From engineering, we normally bond for the public improvements. I'm not certain about bonding for private, for on-site.
That would be a question for Flynn. I don't believe we typically do that.
No, we do not. Sorry. We do not do bonding for the private improvements, but we do do them for the off-site public improvements.
And are there any off-site improvements on this, Edward?
On this particular one, so when the original development took place, most of the public improvement had been completed.
Because they're completed?
Exactly. Including the installation of signal lights. Number five, can I secure a copy of the mitigating negative declaration? It was in my pocket. So those were emailed out to Planning Commissioners last night, except for Mr. Marucci, who didn't get one. So I gave him one today.
Can you restate that?
They asked for the neg deck, and that was sent out, and in response to that, the changes were made.
Number six, are the mitigation measures incorporated into the conditions for approval? So as I mentioned earlier, those were the mitigation measures, which included significantly the installation of signal lights, were carried out in 2006 and '07, when the initial construction was completed.
Edward, again a question. My understanding from Commissioner Calerdyne is that in that neg deck, all of the mitigation measures were standard city policy, and they would be, if there were any, they would be included in these conditions of approval?
That's correct.
So that the answer is yes, but it comes in a different way?
And number seven, has the mitigating negative declaration been filed? Correct. That was filed upon council action when the MND was adopted by council in 2006. Number eight, can you be prepared to talk about how pedestrians walk from the Palm Canyon into the project? So going back to the site plan. So this is a pedestrian link that will lead from Palm Canyon into the project site. I think the only area where there is currently no pedestrian linkage is coming directly from the mobile home park into the site. But however, from Palm Canyon, yes, there is one that leads into the site. It shows better from this way, too. So from this side and from here, those are pedestrians' linkage. Number eight, or number nine, I'm sorry, can there be construction phasing where any mitigation between the residential and --
Just a second. I had asked that we cover them today. I was just asked why we were dealing with the questions, since we hadn't gotten written responses back, and they came late. I just asked that they got dealt with in open session. So it's my request. Sorry.
Could I proceed?
No, yes, please proceed.
Okay. Number nine, can there be construction phasing where any mitigation between the residential and commercial use is built first? There could be, but that would be at the pleasure of the Planning Commission. Number 10, there seems to be landscaping in the median, or there seems to be no landscaping between the median, in the median, between the frontage road and North Palm Canyon. There is landscaping and irrigation within the median that consists of mostly boulders, rubbles, and decomposed granite. So that's what is available there at this point. If the, should the Planning Commission feel like adding more conditions, requiring more, we will work with the applicant to have that done.
Are there questions, additional questions of staff, starting with Commissioner Calerdyne and going across?
None here.
Commissioner Doudenfeld?
I have a question, and I think some of these questions touched on it. The traffic flow around these sites concerns me a little bit, because I often go there, and the only light that's available is a Cherokee, and then you backtrack back to your particular dealership. And the only other way, it seems to me, you'd get to this particular site is this sort of little turnout that's not controlled by any sort of signaling into the frontage road and then onto the site. Has traffic looked at this, and are they comfortable with the fact that the traffic flows can be handled sufficiently with the current pattern that exists around these sites?
There is a light there, Doug.
Is there another?
Yes, there are two signal lights. There is one on --
I only saw, I just drove it, and I thought I only saw one. There is a second one, then, at that second turnout, before you get to Cherokee? Okay.
We can have engineering answer that question.
There is a second light with pedestrian controlled access at that point.
There is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And you've looked at the traffic flows for engineering? You've looked at the traffic flows, and you're comfortable with them? That was the second part of the question.
The dealership does not have a significant impact on the turning movements.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Thank you. Was there a sign posted on the site that there was a project under consideration?
So when this item came before the city, the meeting that our level management and staff had with the applicants was that, for some sensitive reasons, that the proposed project was not to be announced yet, so because of that --
The sign was not posted.
And that was an administrative --
Madam Chair, if I can just interject as well, there isn't a requirement in our code to post a sign for architectural approvals. Conditional use permits, rezonings, those types of actions do require a sign, but architectural approvals do not.
So do we typically not provide signage when it's just an architectural approval?
That's correct.
Okay. And what was the sensitive matter that you were referring to?
It's sensitive, and I think we should, why don't I just -- It's sensitive, and I think we should, why don't I just, can we just leave that question?
Actually, we can have the applicant address that when they make their presentation, or when you have questions for the applicant.
Okay. So when it's just an architectural approval, is public notice sent out as well?
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that?
Okay, so this is just an architectural application, correct?
Correct. It's a major architectural approval.
Sorry?
It's a major architectural approval.
Right. So on a major architectural approval, are adjacent property users notified?
Yes, we notified them during the AAC review and this hearing also.
And, and did that include the residents of the Mobile Home Park adjacent?
Yes, that includes the, the Mobile Home Park.
So, so the individual residents of the Mobile Home Park got notified?
No, that is done through the HOAs.
So, so they were not, then? The city did not notify the individual?
No, the code does not require that.
Okay. When you were referring to the LED lighting in your presentation, was that just the strip lighting, the red strip lighting?
Correct, that's what it is.
So it's none of the parking lot illumination?
No, no, it's not, no.
Okay. And then my final question is, AAC required a resubmital. Has AAC reviewed the resubmital? I was unclear.
No, they haven't. So that is why it is included as a project-specific condition that the planning commission allows us to take it back to the AAC. That is, that is specific to the detail of the LED and the landscaping.
So the AAC, excuse me, the AAC did not ask to see it again? They said just resubmit and send it on to planning commission?
Correct. They were, they were fine with the architecture itself, with the overall project, but those were the two areas that they had. And, and that is not the first time that that will, that has happened in the past. So they just wanted to see the landscaping. They gave specific directions on what they want to see on the landscaping and the details of the LED lighting.
But they did not want to see it again?
That's correct. They want to see the landscaping and the LED details.
Did they?
Yes, they do. They do want to see those.
Madam Chair, if I might clarify, the condition is that the landscaping plan and the details of the red LED lighting will go back to the AAC for review and approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. So they will see those two details again, and as Mr. Robertson has explained, those are conditions of approval.
Is that out of sequence to how it's normally done?
No, we've had that condition applied to other projects as well.
All right.
And, and that is in our purview in terms of when we take this up?
I'm sure it is. I'm just asking if it was out of sequence. Thank you.
I'd like to say I was the planning commissioner present for the AAC meeting, and I can give a report on that meeting when it's appropriate.
If you do it now, that would be great.
Sure. I think overall, surprisingly, you know, our AAC, they tend to be very thorough, usually have very good discussions about projects. And they were generally very favorably inclined towards this project, the architecture, the detail and the overall image of it. They were concerned about the LED accent lighting, and a representative of Porsche corporate office, I guess, corporate design office, pointed out that actually the image, the main image that we see up on the board, she said that the red would probably not during the day be seen at all. It would not be that predominant. So I think that's, that's why the AAC did request the detail for the, the LED Cove lighting, which I see was provided by the applicant. I think most of the discussion with the AAC did apply to the landscape, particularly the landscape along the Frontage Road at Palm Canyon and the landscape buffer between this project and the adjacent Mobile Home community to the, the west. But again, I think overall, the AAC was, was quite supportive of this project.
Commissioner Maruzi, do you have questions for staff?
Only about, this question about the sidewalk. So just explain to me, on East Palm Canyon, when you're heading east, when you reach this parcel, does the sidewalk end? Is there a sidewalk up to that point?
Correct. It ends right before the main entrance into, into the site itself. So if I can go back to one of those. Yeah, so this is where, this is, this is the main driveway entrance into the, into the site. And, but from here to the Mobile Home Park, that's the only segment where there is no sidewalk.
Is there any reason why it isn't being proposed to connect the sidewalk that exists on East Palm Canyon through the site so that someone could walk easily without having to go over the rubble and so forth?
My only speculation is that it's because it's terminated here. It doesn't lead to anywhere, but I may be wrong.
But isn't there sidewalk?
There's no public sidewalk.
There's no public sidewalk?
No. It's basically dirt.
Okay.
There is no public sidewalk, but there is, there is about a five-foot or eight-foot path, rubble path that you could walk along.
No public dirt.
If you cross that bridge, it turns into rubble.
It's, yeah. If I may, the city's bridge project, the city's bridge widening project will include a sidewalk through the Mobile Home Park that terminates at that location.
Through the Mobile Home Park? So it'll terminate at the end of?
At the end, at the property line of the Mobile Home Park.
So that, okay, so that there will be a sidewalk there?
There will be a sidewalk. The project is some years out, but that is.
And so a connecting sidewalk would connect to that sidewalk?
Correct.
Yeah. So, Madam Chair, real quick, so the area will probably illustrate better. So you see from here on, there is no, there are no sidewalks here.
May, just on that point, Edward, if you touch the edge of those. If you go here, there's rubble, there's, there's, there's a dirt path along here, and that's the area that the sidewalk will extend to?
That is correct.
So there will be a sidewalk?
In the future.
Thank you for coming prepared. I really appreciate that. It helps us make really good decisions, so it's always great when you come prepared.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions I have for you. One is, can you talk more about the perimeter wall between this parcel and the Mobile Home Park that is both on the south and on the west side?
Yes, so. This is the, this is the existing wall that separates this parcel and the Mobile Home Park. And as you see, on the northerly end portion of it, it consists of chain link fence. And I believe the applicant has agreed to change the chain link into, to become consistent with this same material. In addition to that, there will be more landscaping that will be planted here to soften the look and to also provide kind of buffer between the auto dealership and the Mobile Home Park used there.
Edward, do you know how tall that wall is?
It is approximately five foot tall, maybe a little higher, about six foot, eight? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I did not stand very close to it, so I couldn't tell. Eight foot.
And is that wall continuous with no breaks completely around the property?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no breaks in the wall. It's eight feet. Okay, thank you. The other question I have is, there appears to be six bays that face directly to the Mobile Home Park. What are those bays being used for on the west side of the building?
That may be a question that we will have for the applicant.
So you had mentioned that the Frontage Road is, was vacated back to the owner of the property. Were there any conditions on how that vacated land could, could or couldn't be used when the BMW dealership was approved?
I, I know for a certain that one of the uses would be for display, but I have to go back and review the old conditions of approval to see if there were additional uses granted. But I know for a fact that one of the main uses would be for automotive displays.
Okay, I just think we need to confirm that because when I read the, the mitigation negative deck that had approved the BMW dealership, I thought that it was to be used for parking. I didn't have the benefit of having anything but the mitigating negative deck. I didn't have any plans on that. The other thing that I was going to ask is, the city is, has proposed a bicycle plan. And are there any plans for bicycle facilities near this project?
Maybe if I can ask the city engineer, do you have any information regarding that?
I'm unaware of any bicycle plans proposed as part of this project.
I guess I'm asking more in general. The city has produced a bicycle plan for the city in general.
The city does have a bicycle plan. The, this segment is not a bicycle corridor. The speeds are high, the traffic is high. There are internal streets that the city has deemed more appropriate for bicycle use.
Madam Chair, if I could just add to that, you will note that on the north side of East Palm Canyon, there is a trail that goes along that portion that has been used as a combined pedestrian and bicycle trail, but obviously it's not a dedicated bike trail or bike lane.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Commissioner Calardine?
No questions at this time.
Are there questions for the applicant? I did have one, Edward. When I read the, I, I read some of the conditions, the nine o'clock, the turning off the LED lights at nine o'clock, that does not require, that would not require that other lights, pathway lights be turned off at that same hour?
That's correct. So that condition only refers to the LED lighting and not the.
And was that something that the applicant agreed to?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, if there are questions for the applicant?
I just have one related question. The LED, then, as I understand, the LED lighting is really a decorative embellishment, correct? So that, so that the brand and the signage that would identify the dealership at night as people are driving by will still be lit?
That's correct.
It's just, it's just till, oh, till nine. What about the other two dealerships or three dealerships there? Are they subject to the same limitations on lighting?
Not to mine.
So why are we subjecting them to a nine o'clock? I, I, that's a very well-traveled road, obviously, and advertising the dealerships are very important to them, I'm sure.
Madam Chair, I might go ahead and address that. The concern of the AAC was that the LED lighting might spill off to our adjacent residents in the Mobile Home Park and also be visible from the South Ridge neighborhood above that. And so again, there was concern with having that decorative LED lighting, that it might impact residents.
Is the Porsche sign that's on the, on the elevation of the building a backlit sign that will stay on past nine o'clock?
The, yes, that restriction would not apply to the signage. It would only be to the lighting.
Only to the decorative lighting?
Correct. And there was also a concern, I believe, in the earlier iterations of the building, in the elevations, that lighting wrapped around onto the west facade. The AAC was concerned that that would also impact residents. So they wanted to see that limited to just the north and the east facades.
Thank you.
I, I actually had two more questions. One is, when I read the AAC report, they had some specifics regarding landscape that it seemed to me we might want to incorporate even into a plan. They're requiring rubble and gravel as opposed to DG and shade trees. And I was wondering why you didn't, even though that goes back to them, you didn't include that as a condition so that we make sure we mirror that?
What I would recommend is that we will include those AAC recommendations and modify planning condition number eight, which speaks to the revised landscape plan, to include those specific recommendations of the AAC relative to plant sizes, the cobble, et cetera.
So those would be, those would go into any plan that we would get back. And the last question is, when I drove it this morning, it looked like along the, the, what I would call the west side of the Frontage Road, I think it's west, up against the mountain, the cars that were parked there were all display cars. They were from some of the dealerships. Can that entire street be used for parking, for display vehicles? Is that, is that something that the Porsche dealership will be allowed to do?
Going back to the action of 2006, Frontage Road actually will allow parking, so.
If it allows parking, the question I have is, is that parking included in the parking calculation so that?
That was not part of the parking.
So it's not part of the parking calculation so that the public, and I know coming to a dealership, I always want to find a place in their lot to park if I'm stopping in. The spaces on the interior, the, the number of reserved spaces on the interior would be utilized for cars of employees or the public. But the Frontage Road could be used for display vehicles?
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that was probably my last question. Do people have questions of the applicant, if you would come up? He doesn't need to make a presentation because this is not a public hearing, but I'm assuming people may have some questions of the applicant.
Glad to answer any questions, yeah.
Anyone?
That's probably why it's secretive. It, it, it is in some form and shape secretive to the fact that what the people aren't privy to right now, and that is a, in January of 2019, the world, Porsche World Dealer Meetings are coming to Coachella Valley.
Whoa.
That's the first time they've, they're usually in another country, but this is the first time they're coming to the United States and coming to California. So every dealer, Porsche dealer in the world, will be here in our valley. And this is somewhat of a new prototype for Porsche. And they are requesting that this not be broadcast yet because they want to do a big unveiling of the new facility in this city. So that's why we are not hiding the fact that we're bringing a new Porsche dealership. And by the way, this is a Porsche dealership currently owned by Indigo Auto Group for sales and service in Rancho Mirage. They're excited to bring this to the city of Palm Springs. This is a multimillion-dollar sales and service facility that we are branding in Palm Springs, which is beneficial, beneficial to everybody and exciting, exciting to everybody. But that's the reason we're trying to keep this particular picture right here under wraps right now because it has some, some very beautiful new designs. With that being said, to try and answer some of the questions, and I was involved with the previous owners back in 2006 in building and designing and building the BMW dealership, remodeling the Mercedes dealership. So I have quite a bit of knowledge on that, on that fact. As far as the sidewalk is concerned, as mentioned, there is a public sidewalk and bike path across the street that actually crosses the bridge. When we put in and were entitled, accepted to put in this traffic light at our dealership, that was the, then the passage from that side onto this side that continued on down to Cherokee. The, the inherent problem that is presented is with the Mobile Home Park. It was put in back when the setbacks weren't there, so it's all the way out past the setback area with until today, knowledge that something was going to happen that way. So there's no sidewalk that was ever going to, going to connect. When we went before the, the architectural advisory, they specifically asked us from where on our plans we now stop the sidewalk, so there is, from the, the bus stop can come up this way, cross highway or East Palm Canyon, and someone on, on the other side of East Palm Canyon can take the traffic light and cross. They asked us to stop our sidewalk there and increase the landscape in front as, as just a, a buffer. And one of the other conditions they asked us on the picture, Edward, that shows the fence where the wall ends in the fence, where the wall ends in the fence, right there, as you can see where we, where our wall stopped, that wall is on our property line. The chain link fence was put in afterwards by the owners of the Mobile Home Park, and that's on their property line. The AAC asked us to continue that wall out to the edge of our property line to add an increased buffer between their residential areas and ours. The other condition that they had, that they brought up when we went before them was we showed the roof plan, but we did not show the exact locations of our HVAC equipment. And they just requested that we come back to them and show them. And they were concerned that we were properly screened from the public view up and down the street, which, as Edward said, we have presented that. We've got them mainly, if you see the gray area diagonally that kind of bisects the building, that is a skylight. And so they were concerned with, the concern was the public being inside the dealership could not, would not look up through that and see the edge of HVAC units, which we've held them back far enough, and then again, that they were screened from the public view. The concern, when we went in before the Architectural Committee, was although the rendering shows a brilliant red line between the panels, they were concerned is, at night, is, or during the day, is that going to be so bright that it would impact drivers or something like that? We told them we would come back with a detail, which we did. And we, and basically what it is, that leading edge that shows red, right there, stop right there, that's the leading edge there. And as you can, may I go up there and point?
Sure, yes. As long as you take the microphone.
This is actually the leading edge of that panel, and it's radius, and the LED light is actually tucked back up here above it. So it just reflects on this, this piece right there. So it won't be a direct light shining out towards the street. We would, one, put it on a timer as to when it came on, when it went off. We would also make it dimmable so we could dim it. And it was stated before, before the Architectural Committee, and then to you, this will not be really seen at all during the daytime. And at nighttime, our sales hours are usually, service opens at 7:30 in the morning and we close at seven. So during the winter hours, when it gets dark earlier, all we are concerned with, our lot lighting and everything is very low because we just basically, we don't have salespeople there. We don't allow people back into the back, and we just need lighting for security and cameras. So those were the three conditions that the AAC requested. And as Edward said, we immediately, within three days, came back with new plans, and they were completed with yours, and I believe he'll submit them back to the AAC.
I had a few questions for you, if other people don't.
Just as relates to being secretive, you realize this is being broadcast on television, so. Just to point that out.
It's a fine line. Like I said, it's not, it's not to keep it quiet that, that we're coming, and this is going to be a beautiful dealership, but the Porsche would like the impact of the grand unveiling of it.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
As pertaining to the wash and detail bays, can you describe what activity? I mean, I know, kind of like washing, but is it somebody with a hose and a bucket? Or is there machinery in there? What goes on in those bays?
First of all, they are open during the days, but they have doors on them so they can, they can be closed. During the day, they'll be open, they bring a car in there. There's, there's two situations. Anybody that has their car serviced at the Porsche dealership, it is washed.
But, but, but how?
In the back, we have, we have a detailed storage room at the end of the line, the very first. And then there is a vacuum system, and there is a wash, pressure wash system. And then there's hoses that come out overhead, and there's a wand that the dealers use. So they wash the car.
And then, and the detailing includes waxing?
It can.
Is there machinery associated with that as well?
No.
That's all hand waxed, okay.
Considering noise or something like that?
Yeah, my concern, can I do comments now or not?
No, these are questions at this point.
I will reserve it until we have comments, thank you.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Woods?
Sorry. Is Porsche still making the bicycle?
Yes.
And are you going to be selling the bicycle here?
Most likely, there'll be one or two of the bicycles there.
Okay, great. Great, is the price point still like seven or $10,000? It is. We have a great new path coming to our valley, so it might be a great opportunity. Can you give me just your read or your understanding? Again, I don't have the full understanding. We've heard from staff about the frontage road, your use of that frontage road, your understanding of the restrictions of that frontage road, and your use of the public right of way for display of your vehicles?
That was brought up at the time, and as, as was said previously, it was all approved. The condition that they put on, not only, at, at that time, one owner owned the entire 1,600 feet of, of frontage. It could be public parking, it could be display parking. We originally showed the display pads in front, and that was fine and all approved. Really, the only thing that they conditioned us as a car dealership or any one of those car dealerships was, don't use balloons, don't put inflatable animals on the roof, things like that for, for sales. But it was, when it was deeded over to the individual ownership at that, we could, we could use it as, as we pleased.
And do you lock your, the entrance off to your parking showroom? Do you have gates or do you...
Currently, at the BMW, we, probably that same picture you had there, there is a gate at the south side of the frontage road that closes from there. So, but there is, someone after hours can come in on the light, can drive down the quote-unquote "frontage road" all the way down. They can't from there get into the property that way. We welcome, and all the dealerships, I'm very familiar with the other ownerships too, they welcome after hours, people coming on. They just, there's internal gates also that stop them. They can go see the, the inventory in the front, the new cars. They can look into the showrooms. They're just not allowed to go back into where personal cars are, service vehicles that are overnight. So yes, they, they can come on that frontage road at any time, 24 hours. They just, after hours, they can't get onto the actual, drive onto the actual site and park on the site.
So I don't, I don't, in my packet, and just in case I'm misunderstanding, from the frontage road onto the new Porsche dealership that's being proposed, I didn't see any gates?
Gates are, for all intents and purposes, are at the back. For ours, ours right now, we, we have gates here that close this off. This is closed off, what we call blockers, they'll put some cars there. The new Porsche store, as you come in here, and there's a main entrance here and the service entrance here, they can come onto the site after hours. At the back of the building, there is, right here, there'll be a gate and a gate here. So after hours, they could come in and park anywhere here in the public area, look around. They cannot take their car to the back where service vehicles are.
Great, thank you very much. Perfect, I really. And that's all my questions, thank you very much.
Mr. Calordein? I had just two questions. Do you have a objection to putting at least a bike rack there since you sell bikes? So that if someone wants to bike over, your employees, for example, want to bike to work?
Not at all, and through LEED certifications, we are putting one on.
You are putting one on? Good. And then, can you explain to me what you said regarding the sidewalk? Someone asked you not to put a sidewalk in?
Correct, that was one of the, the requests from the Architectural Advisory.
So that's something, since they're advisory to us, that's something we can take a look at?
Can I add to that?
Yes.
As a clarification, I'm looking at the site plan drawing now, sheet AS 1.1. And I think the Architectural Advisory Committee, it's hard to denote what I'm, what I'm talking about here, but there is roughly a dozen spaces that are interior to the frontage road, and then there's the landscape bend, and then the frontage road itself. And I think the intent of the AAC comment was to maximize landscaping in that particular zone. I think it's even bubbled as a revision to the original drawing. But I think that's one issue that I would like to talk about during comments section. I don't entirely agree with that comment.
Yeah, I'm there too. Does anyone else have questions? As we're asking questions, I just want to say that we're very excited about what you're doing, but we're doing our due diligence, thank you.
We're excited also.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up. I'm sorry, I cut myself off probably prematurely. You're going to start to describe the sound being emitted from the wash and detail bays, and I kind of cut you off, so.
The only sound coming out of that will just be the water that, that normally is used to walk a car.
You mentioned a vacuum system, though.
The vacuum system, that's why we have, the main thing is put in the, is in an enclosed room, and from that is just the vacuum hoses. They put out very, very minor, if any, noise at all. It's not like your own house vacuum where you've got the canister and the noise right there. This is enclosed, and it just has hoses that go out and can be used on each car.
And there's no other machinery in those bays?
None.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions while the applicant's still in front of us? I'm going to take this to comments. Oh, we have the architect. Is this the architect?
Yes.
Would you introduce yourself?
Gary Whitfield, Whitfield Associates. I just want to add that the LED lighting has been minimized. We've eliminated the LEDs from the west side. We have, half the north face has LEDs. And then, from the upper showroom, on the east side to the front is LEDs, and, and the rest is vacant.
And you, you alluded to the fact that that could be dimmed?
It'll be dimmable.
It's, it's dimmable, so, and that it wouldn't reflect out if it was left on, or you could dim it after?
Yes, and the idea behind the lighting is not to enhance the building through lighting, it's just to accent it. It's not the main design feature, it's really secondary.
Okay, because that's something I wanted us to, we had advice, but I think that's something I'd like us to take up to, as to whether we need to actually turn it off at nine.
And, and also, may I say, the reason that they want to dim it is because they don't know how it's going to be affected. So it's, again, it's just accent, so it'll probably be less intensive than more intensive because it's not the star of the building, so.
So as I turn this over, maybe I'd ask Commissioner Hudson, if you would comment on the roof screening. We may not need to send that back to AAC if it looks adequate to you and to our architects here. I'd like to wrap as much of this up.
Are you referring to the landscape in this case?
No, it was the screening on the roof, which was one of the conditions. It looked to me like it was adequately screened.
Yeah, I would just like to caution the applicant. This is sort of a blanket statement I always make, and it is a code requirement, but some of your package units on the roof, I just, I tend to think that they're going to be taller than the parapet wall. So I'd just like to hope that either the parapet, maybe there's a second parapet wall or something, but I'd hate to be driving down Palm Canyon and see, you know, the tops of mechanical equipment.
Neither would we. We've, we put this, this is modeled three dimensionally, and we've, we've put the roof units on the model, and the locations that they're in are either at or below the parapet. And we're very concerned about it because we don't want to see them either.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's, that's wonderful to hear.
So we may not need to send that condition back and just to accept this?
But the, the penthouse for the elevator does stick up.
So sending this back for comments, and then, maybe as we go through this, I'm going to make a motion to approve, but I'd like comments so that we can append some conditions if we have some.
I'll second.
And I want to hear people's comments before I throw all the conditions in. Sidewalks is one issue. I would like to, to not accept that recommendation from AAC. I'm concerned that people will walk through there, and they'll be walking in the street, they'll be walking in front of your display cars. I would just prefer to see, it doesn't have to be a wide sidewalk, but some connection.
May I add to that?
Yes.
Well, I think that's, that's wonderful, that covers basically that stretch between the two driveways into the, the project. But I think we need to carry that a step farther, to be honest with you. I actually have walked from that bus stop to the, to the BMW dealership, and that stretch of Palm Canyon is pretty scary on the south side. I'm glad to hear from our engineering department that that is a project. But even now, there, there are people that do walk along the street there. I would like to see, it can be, it doesn't have to be a huge wide sidewalk, but I would like to see some sort of connection between the northwest corner and this, around that sort of bulb, the cul-de-sac, if you will, at the end of that, that frontage road, and then connecting to that, that sidewalk, which does continue all the way up in front of the other dealerships.
So that's a condition, I will add that condition, is that agreeable?
I just want to make sure that we don't lose some landscaping as well because I think the fact that it's landscaped between the residential area and the commercial area is very important, too. So AAC wanted more landscaping there, isn't that the reason they really didn't want the sidewalk to go through it?
Discussion of connecting the sidewalk to the, I'll just call it the northwest corner again, by the Mobile Home Community, that wasn't really discussed.
It was not.
It was just the section between the two access driveways.
Oh, they did not get into, okay.
So I, that condition, extending it all the way from the north to the south across so that somebody can walk across a narrower, for the city engineer, what's, what's the narrowest sidewalk we are comfortable with?
Actually, the design that we're looking at for this segment does have a narrower, narrower than standard sidewalk, but the minimum that we require is 48 inches clear.
So a 48-inch minimum sidewalk, is that acceptable to everyone? Other conditions that I heard, the applicant said they were happy to put some, a bike rack or some bike racks on the property. The question of the LED, I think we can accept the screening so it doesn't need to go back. The question, the question of the LED lights, I wasn't...
Oh, the rooftop?
The rooftop screening, if it's adequate, we don't need to send things back to AAC if they've been done adequately. The, I was somewhat convinced that the lights weren't going to shine out, the red and the dim. I don't think we need to limit them.
Timing-wise?
Timing-wise. Commissioner? Commissioner Hudson, do you agree with that?
I absolutely agree with that.
So we're, we all agree with that? And then the only other condition was just that, and, and staff had already indicated that, that we would, when we sent back a landscape plan, that plan would include some of the items that were in the notes from the AAC, including...
Can I address that?
Yeah.
So I, I haven't seen the AAC notes.
They're in our, our packet.
Okay, well, I, I have a note of my own on it. And, and my main concern, as you can tell by my questions, has been the impact of this building on the adjacent Mobile Home Park. And what, and if I look at the landscape plan, which I'm furiously trying to find right now...
It's, it's up on our screen.
Yeah, okay. The trees along the west side of the property does not seem like an adequate buffer to me. I, they're like 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, they're like 90 to 100 feet apart. And I, I would like to see that at least doubled, if not more, in terms of density of those trees. Because I think that's going to be the main visual relief for the residents of the park, looking at that 30-foot blank wall, dark gray or black blank wall. And I'd really like to see more of a, you know, a naturalistic buffer there. The wall's there, which is good.
Wouldn't there be a recommendation for the future landscape plan?
Or a requirement for the future?
I think we could require it as a condition.
Yeah. We're going through this, let's just let us go through this, and then I'll ask you to comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, that was discussed, that concern. I think the agreement was, at least I heard it this way, was that the applicant felt that some sort of landscaping along the entire perimeter wall or this segment of it, but more of a hedge-type material.
I don't see that here.
That's what I'm saying. That should be the condition. But the comment, there was a comment made pertaining to the trees. And of course, you know, as much as we'd like to see shade trees, that sort of runs counter to droppings and so forth onto vehicles. And that was the concern, is having canopy trees. They were willing to accept those. It's just a matter of.
Is this the revised plan or is this the original plan?
I don't recall.
This is the revised plan.
If, at this point, so what I'm hearing is a suggestion that there be a buffer, a green buffer, which is a hedge material, but that there be a hedge material as a requirement as opposed to additional trees in that area. Are you comfortable, as long as there is a green buffer?
Well, I mean, there's already an eight-foot wall, which is, would be a substantial hedge in any condition. So now you're talking about a hedge another, I don't know, what, five feet, 10 feet above that? I think this calls out for trees, and I think there's trees that are more compatible with parked cars. We have street trees with cars parked under them throughout the city, and, you know, many cities have those. I'm not afraid of trees and cars. I think we require them in our parking lots. I'm not seeing that as an objection. I think three trees across hundreds of feet of frontage there is not much of a buffer to that residential component next to them. And I would like to see it increased by a substantial amount.
Before I accept that, I would actually like to hear from the architect or the applicant. One of, one or the other of you who's.
The reason that you don't see as much vegetation along that property line is that the trailer park or the mobile home park, at a rainstorm floods our property. And when it does that, it covers the whole site. What the civil engineer has proposed is a drainage solution along there to capture the water that comes from the surface runoff of the mobile home park, puts it in a riprap calming device, and then drains it to our water catchment areas. So we would, we would plant more trees if we weren't so concerned about the flooding of this building by the adjacent neighbor, so.
I just don't see, you already have three trees there. I don't see how adding more.
Well, those are in fingers.
Yeah, I don't see how adding, you know, three or four more fingers across that frontage impacts your flooding.
What about the loss of parking?
Well.
Do you guys need that much parking?
Yes.
It's required.
The natural drainage, back in 2006, before this land, this site was developed and there was a wall there, all of that trailer park, all their roads, everything drained this way. It just came back out on this, drained out onto this site. And then they, the natural drainage then goes to the back behind the BMW, and then goes back out into the trailer park. That was the natural, and from the Hope's house, that canal, it all came back down there. So when we developed this site, the engineering department from Palm Springs at that time said, you can't, you can't put a wall up there and stop the water. So there are openings.
I saw those.
In the bottom of the wall to allow that to come in. When that, when we developed the BMW site, since this wasn't undeveloped, wasn't developed, the water then naturally came out. We had dry wells along the bottom area that they went into. When they then became overcapacitated, then they go to the back, and they actually go out through the back wall onto the rear trailer park. So now that we're putting a building there, we can't accept on a heavy rainstorm all that water coming and rushing right up to our building. What we've proposed is, as he said, this channel from the wall out about four feet with rip. So that'll catch the water, take it to the back of the property, and then out into additional dry wells and underground containment. We went before the Architectural Advisory because of the requirement for parking and stuff, and the city ordinance or code that says every so many parking stalls you have to have a finger, it was agreed to put trees where we could in those things. As you go back beyond this site, the additional developed paved area, there are some trees and stuff back there.
So were you going to put up any kind of a green hedge or anything to that extent? You can't because of the wall. Okay, so the channel prohibits. Got it, okay.
Well, you're showing, aren't you showing planting in that channel area right now?
There's some vines for the walls.
Well, you're showing jasmine, star jasmine. Is that in that channel? Oh, that's a vine. And then there's this little guy, red yucca. You're showing red yuccas in there, too. Is that right?
I believe so, yeah. Yes.
Well, I'm not saying to plant it in the riprap area, riprap area, but I do think three or four more of those fingers is not going to disadvantage your parking. And I think it would go a long way to ameliorating the, what this wall is going to look like to the residents of that park. And so I would encourage the planning commission to require that.
Only comment on that is when we did BMW and stuff, we did meet with both tenants of the trailer parks, and there was no concern with the wall as a buffer. They were happy with that.
Well, you were hundreds of feet away at that point, though.
On the back, too, and.
No, and they did the BMW dealership.
We've never had a concern or a complaint from anybody in there.
Okay, so that's my comment. And then I have another one. What is, again, this pertains to the impact to the adjacent residential area. The lighting that occurs between the west facade of the building and the west property line. I'd like to see a time limit on the parking lot lighting in that area specifically.
Can you just show me which? The area, just if, if maybe Edward can point out the area you're talking about, or you can.
Are you referring to this section? Yeah, those have been significantly reduced relative to what was initially proposed. And again, we will go, this will go through a separate plan check to become consistent with our outdoor lighting ordinance, especially regarding parking areas.
Is there anything in the ordinance that addresses parking areas adjacent to residential zones?
Absolutely.
And so in terms of the code, is the lighting maximums lower in that area because of that?
And again, I have not done the final plan checking on this, but based on a casualty review, yes, it is consistent with.
Based on what?
On a casualty review, just on a, on a brief review. Yes, it is consistent with our ordinance.
Is consistent?
Correct. Yes.
So no light source will be visible from the residential area?
In the ordinance, it is, they are called, regarded as light spills. So this light from this area will not spill over.
Now, I'm asking about the source itself. Will that be shielded from the residential area?
I'm sorry, we need to have the applicant come up to the microphone if they're responding to questions. Thanks.
Yes, the property line lights, as here, as well as the BMW site, on the property line have a shield on the back of it, so it doesn't, it.
And is the back the part that faces the residential area?
Yes.
Okay, and is that throughout the area between the building and the property line?
Along the property line.
Just along the property line?
Correct.
Not between the building and the property line?
Correct. But the photometric shows that we're not spilling out, the foot candles are not spilling.
Yeah, right, right here. And then if we can go back to the court sheet so I can. So this had proposed court sheet that shows the court sheet. And based on the foot candles in that area that the commissioner was referring to, there will be no spill over, yeah.
So just to clarify, we're accepting plans that basically allow no light spillage into the residential areas? It's a standard, it's a standard requirement, but that's what's in what we're.
Be enforced at final design.
Yep.
Correct.
So.
Okay, thank you.
So we're still looking at the tree issue. I have a question as the maker of the motion for Flynn. The, are you satisfied with the number of trees that we have along that back line have to do with the number of parking spaces that are required? There's not excess parking in there that would allow us to put more trees in?
There are no excess parking spaces, so.
Okay.
Any elimination of a parking space might impact the amount of parking spaces required by this project.
So with that, I think we have to keep the parking, and I wouldn't accept an amendment or a condition regarding additional trees along that back line. Is that consistent with the secondary of the motion? So Flynn, would you read back the motion that we have to us?
So your motion is to approve this application with some additional conditions and revisions to conditions. The first added condition is requiring a 48-inch minimum sidewalk to connect along the northwest corner of the property. As a comment on that, what I might recommend is that that be shown on the final landscape plan that will be reviewed by the AAC, so they can see how that might impact the landscape plan. The second added condition is for the applicant to provide a bike rack on the property. The third is an amended condition. This is relative to planning condition number 11, and that's the restriction on the LED lighting. You, as part of your motion, are removing that condition in its entirety based on the detail that was submitted to you. The fourth is an amended condition to planning condition number eight relative to the landscape plan, that that condition would be amended to include the specific recommendations of the Architectural Advisory Committee, and they will review those additions and corrections to the landscape plan as part of their final landscape plan review. And those were the conditions that you have added.
And I think the other one was that we didn't require the screening of the mechanical, the rooftop screening to go back to AAC.
Okay, so we will add that. The mechanical screening has been approved by the planning commission and does not need to go back to the Architectural Advisory Committee.
Is there anything else in this? Yeah, let me. Commissioner Woods had a comment.
First, I'd like to just change the condition instead of providing a bike rack to providing bicycle parking in general, just the term. It doesn't need to be a single rack. I think I really want to acknowledge.
And that's acceptable.
Thank you. I really want to acknowledge the questioning of Commissioner Herschbein. I think it really is important that we look at the impacts on adjacent uses. You know, one thing that happens a lot of times with zoning and urban planning is that we get, some of the most affordable housing in our communities are next to some of the most difficult uses, be it a freeway or a commercial use or anything. And I think that's the case that we have here. We have a very high-value, high-end dealership right next to a mobile home park. And what we're doing in approving this is we're putting six wash bays within ear's distance to that residential area. And there's really only two ways that we can really look at mitigating that. One is operationally, to make sure that they operate in a way that makes less noise because a spray of a power washer on a car does make noise, and that noise has never existed in that area. And I don't think those residents were ever informed it was coming. The only other way we can do it is to build a barrier between the two. And if I could have you pull up the picture of the wall earlier that you had. And the reason I had this picture pulled up is if you look at the picture, for the most part, the wall, and I assume, and I'll ask staff in a moment, for the most part, it appears that the adjacent housing is suppressed to, or lower than the wall, which leads me to believe there's probably some sound protection and mitigation because it is a solid wall to that residential. So, you know, I'm more comfortable with that. But I do appreciate the line of questioning because I think it's very important in our role up here in doing that. We had talked about the red lighting, and I think I had heard the, the two things. One, that the lighting could be dimmed. And two, as a concern of residents above and maybe across the street to see it. I really don't know how bright this lighting will be, and I have no way to know if we can regulate it. But if we can say that it's dimmed at night, such that it's not a shining star, but still gives you the architectural features and kind of panache that we're looking for, I would be a little more comfortable with that, just because I'm not sure what it's going to look like in the end. As far as the sidewalk goes, I really do appreciate the conversation on that, and I appreciate staff coming back to us with that. I've looked at several historical Google Maps, and people do absolutely walk along there. And they do not use the sidewalk that's proposed on private property. And if, you know, there's several pictures currently on the Google Maps that will show you that. They walk where the display cars are, is where they end up walking. And I think one of our commissioners just said that he did that as well, and that it is dangerous, actually, to walk there. And I might propose the sidewalk not be on the private property, keep the landscaping as the AAC, but it be on that, on our property. It be within the public right-of-way along the finger. It's completely unlandscaped at this point. It's mostly just boulders. It would be a very simple project to do for the length of the property, to put a sidewalk in right next to Palm Canyon. So my proposal would be, yes, on sidewalks, but to have that sidewalk against the public right-of-way of Palm Canyon. The other thing that I think was brought up by AAC, and Edward, can you pull the rendering of the building up? So if you look at this rendering, you look in the far right corner, the people are basically standing in the landscaping. And the people walking towards the building from the left have to walk through the landscaping. I think there is a pathway that goes there. I really think that when the landscaping plan comes back, we really need to have AAC also look at kind of pedestrian pathways into and out of the site. If you walk, you know, if you walk, it's very easy on that wide aisle to put a separation between the pedestrian, but put a sidewalk in. It won't be hard. And I'm hoping that the maker of the chair and the second would accept having the AAC really look at the pedestrian walkway in and out. And they will accept the opportunity to put a sidewalk along Palm Canyon. And they'll accept the fact of having a bike rack, or bike parking, excuse me, in that. Other than that, I think it would be a great addition to the city, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Can I clarify what you said? You said you were, you were comfortable with the wall, that you appreciated the line of questioning in terms of the impacts, but you were comfortable that the wall provided sound mitigation?
Yes.
So you weren't proposing additional green space along that wall? Where the, because we can't, because of the water mitigation? I just wanted to clarify what you said.
Vines on that wall do not, you know, my, the lighting question I had was to protect them from the sound and the light, which I think, the light is being protected, the residents are protected from it. It was the sound more than anything. The landscaping is an aesthetic thing. There's no landscaping currently there. A vine on a wall really only helps the dealership. It does nothing to the other side. I'm not sure a tree does much to enhance any sort of benefit to the addition. I'm not sure a tree does much to enhance any sort of benefit to the addition to Chalit Park.
Flynn, can I borrow you for the, the alternate on the landscaping? I do agree that we should ask the AAC, and this is in our motion, to look at pedestrian pathways across the landscaping. On the fingers, my understanding is that those areas were given over to the dealerships and that they actually have pads on them for display vehicles so that they're not necessarily safe to walk along currently. Is that correct? Because when I'm looking at this, I see, I see a, a straight line of display vehicles.
Yes, that's correct. As was indicated by staff earlier, those were approved as part of the 2006 approval. In, just chatting briefly with the city engineer, there's a concern about putting the sidewalk directly up against East Palm Canyon, that if we can continue it along the interior of the frontage road, it's a safer.
Yeah.
Path of travel for pedestrians. And so if you're amenable to that.
Yeah.
What we will look at as part of the AAC review of the landscape plan is to make that connection to the frontage road rather than directly on East Palm Canyon.
I, and I wanted to explain to Commissioner Woods why I wasn't incorporating that into the motion, but keeping the motion as it was. The applicant has also agreed that they would extend the wall where there is the chain link, and although they've agreed to that publicly, I'd like that also to be in the motion so that it's clear that it's a similar material and that wall, the border wall is extended along where the chain link is. Oh, is it, is it in the plan that we don't need to do that? With that, are there other comments before we call the roll on this motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I, I appreciate the, as long, you know, as long as we re-look at the pedestrian access and make sure that it actually is welcoming and warming and brings you in. However, those fingers belong to the city at this point, and they're not landscaped. And this is really an opportunity to have those landscapes as part of the landscaping plan that comes back to us.
And I, I agree that they should be, the fingers should be landscaped along this, this area as part of the landscape plan, or at least ask the AAC to consider that.
And Madam Chair, just to clarify exactly which area you're speaking of, is it the area adjacent to East Palm Canyon in the photo that was just up there? If I could have you go back to the photo.
My, my understanding is it's the area that was up, just up there.
So this is where additional landscaping is requested?
Yes, for the entire length of the property.
Okay. So with that, we will add that condition, that landscaping be added along the East Palm Canyon frontage.
Are there any other comments to this, questions? I think we have a motion.
Madam, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I don't know if there was any read or, or feedback, just on the, the dimming of the lights. It appears from the applicant that that was something they were willing to do. I'm not even sure how to regulate that. The applicant's shaking his head yes, but if we want to add something about that.
What I might recommend is in planning condition 11, rather than eliminating that condition in its entirety, what we will do is indicate that the decorative LED lighting shall be on a dimmable switch or something to that effect.
That's fine.
Can you put something in the condition that, that once it's built and once the lights are installed, there is a review so that the city can take a look, see at what the lighting level is to make sure it's not in any way infringing on other sites in particular residential area?
I think yes, include that condition and have that be something done by planning staff.
Right.
So what we will do is with a review by planning staff at six months to review the impacts of the LED, decorative LED lighting.
And set the dim, the dimming levels. Do we need to read this through another time, or can we take a vote? Are you comfortable, Flynn, that you've got?
Yes, if you want me to go through, I'll do it one more time.
No, it's okay.
Condition number.
It's okay. This passes seven zero, and it's been approved. Congratulations, and please invite us to the grand opening. Okay, does anybody need a five-minute or 10-minute break? No, we should just go straightforward. All right. Okay. 3A, unfinished business. The amendment of the Planning Commission Rules of Procedure, and there is a resolution and also discussion on this item.
Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I'll just make a brief opening statement and some explanation. As you may recall, back in December of 2017, the Planning Commission took action to request that revisions be made to chapter 2.29 of our municipal code, which talks about the Planning Commission meeting schedule and more specifically requires us to hold a meeting once per month. The issue at hand was the month of August, which all other boards and commissions typically do not hold meetings, and the Planning Commission wanted to have that same possibility. After you took action on that, I met with the city manager and with our city attorney, and rather than amending the municipal code, the city attorney is comfortable that all we really need to do is amend the Planning Commission bylaws to indicate that you all have the option to not meet during the month of August. And so on page two of the bylaws, you'll see some strikeout and underlined in red, and that is what I, what I'm proposing as a modification. And again, that would give you the ability to not have meetings during the month of August. While we are addressing the topic of the bylaws, there was a question at a previous Planning Commission meeting about the use of subcommittees. And what I might recommend, if the Planning Commission wants to discuss that topic today, if you choose to do so, you could also include procedures for subcommittees here in your bylaws. And so if that's the direction of the Planning Commission, we might have that discussion today, but I would ask that you continue this item to a future meeting so I could then incorporate those procedures into the bylaws and revise the resolution accordingly so that we could vote on that at a future meeting.
Do we need a subcommittee on subcommittees?
We might need to do a subcommittee on subcommittees. One of the other things I need to do, just as a general comment, is the city council has adopted policy on gender-neutral language. We have a lot of his/her language still left in the bylaws, and so as part of your changes that you may make, I'd also clean all of those up. I haven't done that yet. I didn't have time to get that done before we sent the agenda out, but that is something that I would also do as part of the actions you may take on the bylaws.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Notice that there is a, when we, there are a couple places where we talk about the role or the order of voting in there that it goes. I think it's alphabetical order, except for the chair is last. I think our practices have both the chair and the vice chair be last. And the, you might just want to clean that up.
Well, we're not going to be discussing all the nits and nats of this rules of procedure today. You really want us to focus in on this one change and whether we want to put subcommittees in the rules of procedure. I mean, we could tear this thing apart if we wanted to, and maybe we need a subcommittee to do that. But this is not the appropriate body to be nitpicking these rules, I don't think.
We were going to go into subcommittees and this other stuff. It just seemed reasonable to pick up that particular net, but if we don't, it's not a big deal.
What I'd like to do is have us deal with the two items that everyone knew were going to be in front of us and ask Flynn, of course, to change this to gender, gender-neutral language. But I think to comment on the language that he's proposed for some, for going dark in the summer. The only concern I had with your language, Flynn, is I think the Planning Commission will always prefer to be dark in August so that, it says, if the Planning Commission wishes, I think probably the language I would rather see is that it, unless the city council requests otherwise, we would be dark in August. So that we can expect to be, and that future councils don't have to take, make motions to be dark in August. I don't know how anybody else feels.
I think that's fine. I, I just have to say, maybe Michael can add to this, I'm very surprised that our city attorney thinks that a rules of procedure trumps an ordinance requirement. The ordinance is the ordinance. It's, it's the law. I don't see how a rules of procedure can undermine the law.
The only way that I can respond to that is that the city attorney referenced in that determination was not myself. That was the city attorney, Eddie Kotkin.
I, I guess I, we don't trust God, but I mean, I, I don't understand that.
If I remember the conversation correctly, chapter 2.29 also gives the Planning Commission the authority to establish their own rules of procedure, and in that, that can include their meeting schedule as well. And so he was comfortable that we didn't need to modify that. I, I think we're meeting the intent of the law in that the Planning Commission is holding, on average, at least one meeting per month. Our schedule is actually generally two meetings per month. So again, at the direction of the city attorney, I have come forward with the direction that he has given me.
Well, it's definitely the easier way to go.
But in terms of language, I would say absent city council direction, otherwise the Planning Commission shall not hold meetings during the month of August.
I would just tone that down. Instead of saying shall, I'd say may not hold meetings during the month of August.
May not. I share.
Does may not imply that we have to then discuss it and vote on it each time?
Not necessarily. What we typically do as planning staff, we post the Planning Commission meeting schedule prior to the calendar year. As part of that posting of the calendar, we would typically include that there are no meetings during the month of August so that the public and applicants can plan accordingly. So it's something that I don't think you need to necessarily indicate in there or take a motion on, but by posting of the calendar, we've satisfied the informational aspect to the public.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I, again, I just share Commissioner John Enfeld's concern about this.
Well, I don't. Who's going to sue us for an August meeting?
Well, no, I want to accept it because this is what we have.
Yeah, I mean, and I guess we, the city attorney is the city attorney. That's what he's empowered to do, is to advise us we're taking his advice. So we're, I think it's a reasonable reliance, basically.
Yes. So the change in rules would be in reliance on the city attorneys.
With respect to the subcommittees, are you suggesting, Flynn, that we establish standing subcommittees for the commission?
No. What I'm proposing is that we would establish procedures for how we use subcommittees.
Create and use?
For example, one of the things that we'd probably want to point out is that subcommittees can consist of no more than three members of the Planning Commission.
I see, rules regarding.
Things like that. Subcommittees cannot take action on any items.
We had.
Just general procedures such as that.
The only place where we've had subcommittees, unless pre-oth, we, we have had subcommittees that would consider a specific architectural item and have empowered them to make a decision. So we can't do that. We'd have to have that come back to us. That would be an approval subject to a subcommittee approval of a sub-item.
Let me just clarify that. You haven't given them the authority to decide matters, but typically what you've had them do is you've given conditions of approval and you've used a subcommittee to make sure that the final plan conforms to the conditions of approval.
So is that action that they've taken? That's just?
No, it's not action. It's just having them in a review capacity to make sure that it conforms to an adopted condition of approval. Now, there are other cases. Here, let me kind of go through this quickly. There are three cases where you use subcommittees. The first is, as I've mentioned, to confirm conformance to conditions of approval. So sometimes you will approve something here at the Planning Commission with conditions that apply, let's say to a landscape plan, for example, and you may appoint a subcommittee to review those changes to the landscape plan to make sure it conforms to the condition that you have applied to the project. Another way that we use subcommittees is when you have a project in process where there may be design details that perhaps need to be fleshed out a little bit better, you send something to a subcommittee to review, and then you have that subcommittee come back to you. So again, the subcommittee is not taking action on an item per se.
It's recording that.
They're basically working with the applicant to bring the project into compliance with our codes and requirements and presenting that to you as the full body of the Planning Commission to act on. And then the third case where we use subcommittees is on policy items, that we have a subcommittee work on, with staff, on developing policy. However, again, the subcommittee doesn't take action on things. We bring that policy for a discussion of the full Planning Commission.
And our practice has been, when we've had subcommittees on policy items, those meetings are open to the public and they're noticed.
We haven't always done that in the past. However, the city, city attorney has been very good about having us do that, I'd say over the last year or so, that on policy matters, members of the public may attend.
Well, we're current, we're currently doing that. So if we had rules, if the subcommittee is meeting on policy items, those meetings would be noticed and open to the public.
Correct.
And the subcommittee would be reporting the policy back to the Planning Commission for recommendation to the city council.
Correct.
So that, that's the way I think we're currently handling that, and if we wrote it into the rules, that's probably the way I'd want it written into the rules. But the two, the two other subcommittee forms, the confirmation of conformance of conditions and the committee to do, to process conditions to recommend to the commission on projects, I think those do not need to be noticed or open to the public. Those are one-time, probably one or two-time meetings. Does that sound right?
Generally, what I'd like to do is just consult with our city attorney on those two situations, just to make sure that there, it isn't necessary to open those up to the public. I think there is a desire on the part of city council that anything that we do is open and transparent, so there may be direction that we might need to open those up to the public as well. But let me review that with the city attorney.
Those would generally be open to the applicant or appellant, though, because those, those are project-related subcommittees.
Does the city council also follow these same guidelines? They have subcommittees as well, don't they?
They have been modifying how those subcommittees meet. For example, I was recently requested to put together a subcommittee meeting for the downtown project, which includes council members Middleton and Mayor Protem Roberts. We now have to post an agenda for that and have that available and open to the public and hold those meetings here at City Hall. So there have been some recent changes on the part of city council to also do that as well.
At those noticed meetings, does the public have a chance to comment?
Correct. Just like any other of public meetings that we hold, there is time on the agenda for the public to comment.
But if you could discuss with the city attorney, those two other forms of subcommittees, which are very much process on projects, and I think that's how they would be defined, I'm wondering that those need to be posted to the public, but I would think they have to be open to the applicant.
So are we suggesting that with respect to the creation of subcommittee issue, we wait until we get feedback from the city attorney on the three types?
Yeah, and then Flynn bring this back to us.
And that I will draft language for you.
So we're only looking today at this one change regarding the meeting in August?
Actually, what I'll have you do is continue this to a future date, and I'll bring it back when I have the subcommittee language.
Before August.
Yeah.
Before August meeting.
Absolutely, as quickly as possible. I'd just like to ask the chair, were there any other concerns relative to subcommittees and how we use subcommittees here in Planning Commission that perhaps we might want to address through procedures?
Well, I'm just wanting to make sure that they meet the concerns of members of the commission. I know that some of the commission members had been concerned about transparency.
I'm just hoping there's a better way of communicating sort of what happened at these subcommittee meetings, whether it be a staff report or a report from a subcommittee member. I know that I've done that in the past, but I think some sort of, I don't know, more formalized reporting strategy should, might be discussed, because I think it is important not just to sort of say, well, we sort of talked about this and sort of talked about that. I think we need to say, okay, these were definite decisions or directions, and I think that just needs to be clarified. Personally, I think it should be a staff report.
I'm a little concerned that my.
When we, when we get to policy, though, I think there should be, if we are proposing a. When we get to policy, though, I think there should be, if we are proposing, say we have a subcommittee that meets on a policy issue, let's try small-lot subdivisions. And we -- the report back would be a recommendation on policy or the fact that we haven't been able to recommend policy in the past on that example, although we had a recommendation, we had to go through sequent studies before we could make a recommendation. So some answer as to where we're going, but I don't think every policy subcommittee meeting needs to be reported back, because you usually don't flesh anything out in one meeting.
I would have to agree with that, because I don't think we should add another burden on the staff when we're sort of formulating these ideas. I mean, I've only been on one, which is the golf course conversion, and we've gone through many iterations, a lot of different ideas, but things haven't really gelled. When they do, of course, we'll present that. Or we could do, as you say, have someone from the committee, subcommittee, just a brief summary of what went on. But I don't want to put an additional burden on the staff for that.
I was referring to the end of the process, after a series of meetings have occurred. Sort of a synopsis of what decision.
And I think at the end of the process, I think there should be a report. I mean, generally, we've had reports back on the two project-related ones. We've had reports back from the members themselves in an open forum. And if there was policy and policy was coming, I would believe that the report would be in a study session before it came to the commission. Maybe we write that into the rules.
And so what I will do is I will also include reporting in some fashion in our procedures, so that that's clear in our bylaws.
Is there any -- I don't -- is there any additional concern with what we've just discussed? I mean, we're continuing this until the next meeting, or?
Let's go ahead and continue this to the next meeting, because again, with August coming up more quickly than we can anticipate, it would be good to have these bylaws finalized before then, well before then.
So do we need to take a vote on the continuance?
Yes, if you would please, since this is a scheduled agenda item.
Would someone make a motion to continue?
So we will continue this matter until our next meeting, which is on the 28th of March?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously. Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments.
I have a comment. I'm becoming a little concerned as I drive around the city about a particular landscaping issue, and that is the parking fields, landscaping within the parking fields at shopping centers. We're spending a lot of time looking at the original plans for such tree coverage, and it's supposed to be have standards for how much tree coverage there should be in the future. I'm seeing a lot of parking lots where the finger trees or the little box trees, well, either -- they were there originally, but they're not there now. For whatever reason, they died or -- and I'd just like to alert the commission to see if anyone else has observed the same thing. Then would have a question for staff, is since they would no longer be in compliance with the landscape plan, would the appropriate recommendation be to have staff take a look at whether the -- would take as an action item to discuss with the property owner that they're no longer in compliance with the landscape plan?
I have a better idea. Why don't we refer it to code enforcement?
Okay.
That's our method for speaking with the property owner, is through a code enforcement violation. So anytime that you do see missing landscape materials, if you would just go ahead and call those in directly to code enforcement, they will investigate. They will work with planning staff to review the approved landscape plan and make sure that they bring that into compliance.
Can you consider them -- so can you go ahead and notify them on the general issue? And then we'll probably be gathering up specific items as time goes on.
Additionally, buffer plants. I've seen areas where trees that were required as a buffer were entirely cut down. Anything else in the way of comments? The Planning Director's report.
Okay, I have a comment. Madam Chair, you know, I understand that Commissioner Johnenfeld doesn't want to open up all of our rules and regs for the Planning Commission, but just I want to put something out as food for thought. There's a lot of confusion when something is not a public hearing, but it impacts a neighbor, on when they can actually speak during the hearing. Many cities allow people, like when you have a CUP that's not necessarily a public hearing, to get up and speak during the item. So as we flush this through, and especially in trying to be more transparent, I would personally like to hear more from the public and get the public involved. I think it's very sustainable for a city to have public involvement. I think it's important to hear, even when it's not a controversial issue. I am not sure what procedurally we might do for that, or if it's just something that the chair can open to. But I would like to have that as more -- to be more formalized in the process, if we can.
What I do now is I always tell people which items on our agenda are not public hearing items and allow them to speak during public comment. I try and be really specific about that, and I think people are aware of that. I think it is something that we should do, but I'm not sure that I want to open up non-public hearing items to public hearing. If we had a -- you haven't been here on a day when we have a 12-item agenda or 10-item agenda, but I think we want to make sure that we can get through the items for the applicants that are in front of us. So allowing people to speak in the beginning and notifying them, I think, is the way I'd rather handle that. I don't know if anybody else has opinions about that.
I've always -- people who are really concerned about an issue will show up, and they will make public comment during the general public comment phase.
I can just tell you from personal experience from several people in Palm Springs, they have actually come to the meetings, or they've showed up five minutes late to the meetings. They've been shunned from speaking on a particular item because the public comment has been closed. I really don't think that is an appropriate way to use it as we look at this in the future. And I don't think people are -- the general public is always completely clear what is a public hearing and what is not. So I just think as we, as we as a commission massage it, that we really, I personally, would really want to hear from the public, and even if it's a long agenda, to find a way to make sure that the public is speaking to us.
Commissioner Hirschman?
I can say in the past that that has been a problem, because it wasn't always clear to me what was a public hearing and when a -- as a commissioner, and when a person could speak during the agenda item or had to speak before. But I think Chair Wermuth has been very good at remedying that situation by being very explicit at the beginning of the meeting. If someone's late to a meeting, it's kind of their fault. But as a way to ameliorate that, maybe we can put something in the procedures. I'm not necessarily pushing this idea, but it just came to me, that we -- that announcement does need to be made at the beginning, that items that are, that need to be addressed at the public hearing level, or items that can be addressed during the agenda item.
Or both.
Well, just that it's clear, a statement is made at the beginning.
Yeah.
Can I add a comment or a recommendation?
Because it wasn't always done.
Right.
And that was the confusion.
I think some sort of statement in the agenda itself might be useful as well. So if somebody looks at the agenda online or picks up a hard copy here, that they have it written down.
I do, too.
We're starting to get into discussion, rather than comment and report, but what I might suggest is that as we have the discussion on the bylaws, that would be the appropriate place to address that as well, and we can get into elements of including that on our agendas. So we'd be more than happy to include that as part of the discussion or the bylaws.
Anything else, Flynn, in your report?
I do have one final sad item to report. This is Mr. Dowd's last meeting with us, and we will be very sad to see him go. I'm going to try and say this without crying, because we've appreciated him so much, having his support here at the meetings. One of the things that I particularly appreciate about Michael is that unlike many attorneys, he is concise and succinct. He gets right to the heart of the issue, answers your questions, and sends us on our way. So again, I've been very appreciative for the support that he's provided to us, and we will miss him greatly.
Here, here. Michael, would you like to give us some comments?
Sure, I'll try to keep on that theme of being succinct and -- I actually didn't have anything prepared, but I would like to just let you all know that I've greatly enjoyed my time out here, and will definitely miss my Wednesdays with the Planning Commission. The amount of attention you put into your work and your willingness to roll up your sleeves on these issues is really commendable, and I say that as someone who's seen more public meetings than I'd care to admit publicly. So I really do want to commend you on the work you do out here. I think it's a very exciting city, and I will miss seeing the projects that come through. And I've said it before, but Flynn is absolutely incredible, and I think you are all in very capable hands, and he's a true resource to be appreciated, as is the remainder of the staff that brings these matters to you. So thank you all for your time, and again, it's been wonderful from my perspective.
Michael, speaking for the commission, we have loved working with you these last three years. We wish you the very best, and thank you for your service to the city. And now we'll all cry. Oh, and we're adjourned. 28th, 28th at 1:30.